Okay, so if you will join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. So I'm going to put, welcome to the Rutland Town Select Board Meeting. This is July 20th, 2021 at 6 o'clock. We have with us this evening Select Board Member Don Trophy, John Paul Fagnant, Sharon Russell, I do believe Joe DiNardo is going to be calling in briefly, and I'm Mary Ashcroft, the Chair. So, welcome all of you. We have a very hefty agenda. And so we've gonna start with some of it, and then we're gonna hop around some. We also have one, two, three, possibly four executive sessions for this evening. So we're gonna tend to take those toward the end. And if department heads, if you need an executive session, let us know as we're going through. The orders are here, and I think most of us can take a quick look at them and sign them. I've been hoarding them here. Where do you leave, Joseph? Okay, good. So just a reminder, and since it would only be Joe to come in and sign and review the orders, the others of us can do it while we're here tonight. Joe, uh, let's do the approval of the Select Board minutes, and then we'll move to Joe, and then we'll move to other items. First is June 22nd, minutes of the meeting. Board members present: Mary Ashcroft, Sharon Russell, and Don Trophy. So I would entertain a motion from either Sharon or Don, so move. Motion is made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any additions, corrections, deletions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
I'm staying.
I'll, I'll stay on, man.
Thank you, Joe. Do you have the minutes, or are they in my little pink folder?
Uh, they're not, there's one that you have.
Okay, so Sharon, if you could sign that, and then pass it to Don. Next is the Select Board Meeting for July 6th. Present were Mary Ashcroft, Sharon Russell, Joe DiNardo, and John Paul Fagnant.
Move to approve.
Motion is made by JP, seconded by Sharon. Any additions, corrections, or deletions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold, stay.
Aye.
Sharon? And all vote aye. So we have approved the minutes. And there's the next one. And then we have the Select Board Meeting for June 29th. It was actually an ARPA discussion, and there were two members present. And, um, Don, you and I, we can do this informally because it's just you and I. You okay with, um, the minutes as printed?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay, um, I am as well, so we'll accept those minutes, and there's no place to sign. Okay. Joe DiNardo is joining us. He has a limitation on time this evening, so we did want to take one item out of order. If you will look down under New Business, Item B, Board to Discuss CNC Fireworks. Uh, you will recall that, um, we had, in previous years, issued a permit for CNC to sell fireworks, consistent with state law. The state law changed due to a Supreme Court ruling in August of 2020. And CNC fireworks came in. We issued them after some negotiation and discussion, a, an amended permit. And then we received, and this is in your packet. Um, we did have, we, we received information that there was a, um, there were, there were some allegations of violation in their sales. So we had our town constable, second constable investigate, that's John Paul Fagnant. And we did have a hearing on the violation. And participating in the hearing were Sharon Russell, Mary Ashcroft, and Joe DiNardo. Be, at, after the close of the hearing, but before we issued any findings, we received a letter from CNC fireworks attorney Joe, uh, R. Joseph O'Rourke, informing us that CNC fireworks is surrendering its permit issued by Rutland Town, dated June 15th, 2021, and indicating that its location, Woodstock Avenue, will be closed, and they will be ceasing operations. So I would entertain a motion from the three people um, who participated in the decision to accept the surrender of the permit and not proceed further with any violation, um, hearing.
So you want a motion to?
Joe, Joe moved.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. I didn't put that very eloquently, but there's no reason for us to issue a decision on the violation allegations, if in fact they are surrendering their permit, so.
It would go to, if they ever applied for another permit again, you wouldn't be able to look at their record and see the violations. And while I can't vote on this matter, I think it's important that people recognize that in most professional situations, you cannot surrender your license wonder, once you're under investigation, and certainly not during the deliberative process of the board granting it. So I'd encourage you folks to vote to revoke the permit based on the evidence, if that's what you found.
Okay, I move to revoke the permit.
Well, Mary, um, point of order.
Pending motion. Yep, go ahead, Joe.
So, so, so the motion that I made was to accept their surrender of their permit. And we could vote on that, and then we could vote to, uh, suspend it also. I mean, it would be doubled, the same thing twice, but we're just accepting their, their, that they surrendered it. And then I would, I would go with Sharon that we would vote to, uh, you know, re, re, uh, revoke their, right? And then that way, we will have a record if they should come back, you know, to, to the point of, um, JP. So I think we should vote twice.
Okay, so the first motion is to accept the surrender of the permit?
So, just a point of order, you, if you accept the surrender of the permit, you then can't, uh, reject the permit. You need to reject it first.
I see. Okay, then I withdraw my motion.
Okay, Joe's motion is withdrawn. The pending motion now is Sharon's, which is to revoke the permit.
Right.
Pursuant to the deliberations conducted, and we still need to issue the findings and conclusions. So motion is made to, uh, terminate the permit. Joe, is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Again, it's the three people who participated. All in favor of revoking the permit, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, the permit is revoked. And now I've got to go back and do the, the write-up, so, thanks, guys.
Yeah, well, I, I, I understand, Mary, that, you know, it's probably better that we have a nice trail, paper trail, and that we have done our, our process, and, and we found that, um, they were in violation, so that if they came back and said, well, why won't you issue us a permit? We can say because we voted that you were in violation. The other way, we would have no real reason to tell them they couldn't have a permit. So I, I think this is probably the, the much better way.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Now, are you staying with us for a while, or was this it?
Um, I'll, I'll be on until about 6:30, then I, then I need, need to leave. If that's okay with you. Yeah, so I'll, I'll be here for part of the meeting.
Okay, we have a number of folks here, so.
A question, Mary, before you proceed. When Joe leaves the meeting at 6:30, will he be marked present or absent on the minutes for this meeting?
I think what usually occurs is there's some notation that he's leaving at, at a particular time.
Okay.
Okay.
I would like you to do that on the previous minutes for me on the last one, when I called you to.
Okay, I didn't even know, oh, for, the minutes that we've already approved?
Right, right. Well, I wasn't sure what your procedures were, so I didn't.
We know a lot of stuff. Can we take that up at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify it.
Don't forget to bring it up at the end of the meeting.
Everybody in this room.
You didn't raise it at the time, Don, so, okay. All right. Do we have with us any member of the public who is no, not already included on the agenda?
Me.
Okay, Teresa Cooley.
I'm here for two things. One thing with this.
What, would you come up here, and so we can see you? Thank you, ma'am.
Two things. One is the CNC fireworks. I just, um, because I'm coming in on this late, and I'm very, very sorry on that, but just wanted to find out, because the minutes were kind of confusing to read from the, from the last meeting, and how the, the operation and everything went. Just was wondering if CNC fireworks sells different classes of fireworks? Is there anybody here that can speak to that?
There are certain things that are allowable under state law. What are they called? Sparklers. Sparklers are allowed, and the statute says something about novelty smoke items, okay?
Because I know that there's Class C and there's Class D fireworks, and Class C is the consumer, and Class D is the professional, the aerials and whatnot. And I was just wondering, because, you know, I, I know where all of this has originated from, basically. And unfortunately, they were in violation of their permit or whatnot. I don't know if you gave them a warning ahead of time or whatnot. But they're not the only, they're not the only place to buy fireworks. So these people that have, you know, have concerns for the sensitivity of their pets and people, it's still gonna be an ongoing struggle. Um, so I hate to see somebody, you know, if they were in total negligence of it, yes, I can see you revoking it. But if they, you know, if it wasn't total, total negligence, I just don't know if there's a way to work with, with them to maybe limit the class of fireworks that they sell at this particular location. But the thing is, other people from Rutland Town are gonna go to North Star Fireworks in East Montpelier, and they're gonna purchase bigger fireworks, possibly. So these, unfortunately, these people with these sensitive pets and people are, you know, gonna be in the same boat as what they were before. Um, I know that we're responsible, uh, fireworks people. We get our permit. We got our permit last year. I called to get a permit this year, and unfortunately, there was no permits to be had. Um, went and talked to the gal at the, uh, city, the public of, uh, fire depart, uh, Public Safety, Christine, and they, at that point, it was so new, they didn't know what was going on. So, moving forward, how can we make it so that people who are fireworks enthusiasts and people with sensitive pets and people can coexist? We, I've been a good neighbor, and I've let my neighbors know that we're gonna be letting them off at a certain time, and they make provisions. They don't like it, but they're very thankful that we're responsible, neighborly, good neighbors. So if we could set the tone, we're gonna have to set the tone someplace, even if it's not for CNC, you know, just because CNC is no longer a player. They're still in Pittsburgh. North Star's in East Montpelier, that's near the Capitol.
I, I think one of the things that we all noted was that this is not just a Rutland Town issue, obviously. It is a state issue. And because of the Supreme Court ruling state, um, there was a bill introduced in the legislature that would probably define a little bit better, um, some of the permitting process. So, and that didn't pass this year. Um, the legislature will be coming back next January. I suggest you may want to take, uh, Butch Shaw from Pittsburgh.
Jack, Jack has been in contact with him. He hasn't responded back to him, unfortunately.
Respond first, first by saying, I think you should be in touch with your legislators about it, because I think it's primarily there. And some of the issues you raise are very appropriate for them to hear as they're considering the bill.
Yeah, because I, you know, I think, uh, both sides, there, you know, the, there's both sides to the coin. And I think if we, you could, they could come up with a reasonable compromise to make everybody happy, you know? I just don't know if there is even, even the possibility of boomless fireworks, you know, just.
I will say that before the Supreme Court ruled, when we were, when we had authorized CNC fireworks um, to sell under the laws that existed at that time, um, we did have a process for any permit that was issued by our fire chief to be posted on our, um, Select Board webpage. So people knew.
That was fantastic, and that really helped my neighbor. She really appreciated that, and she liked that, because at least she had a heads up, and she could do something with her pet. So if, I don't know.
So I would recommend that you pass that word along as a good way of, you know, keeping track of.
Try to be responsible, good neighbors, you know?
So you said you had two items. Do you have another?
Yes.
Oh, uh, on, on that particular item, Teresa, you, you know, y- you raised some very good points, and, uh, and Mary's suggestion is valid. Butch Shaw, Representative Butch Shaw, right in Pittsburgh, would be a, a key legislator to talk to, because he sponsored one of the bills, and he had another one in his pocket to sponsor this time around. But, um, the bottom line to all of this stuff, really, it's not a fireworks problem. And it's not a traffic problem when people are killed on those roads. It's a people problem. It's, it's a courtesy problem.
Yeah.
It's a notification problem, which, a- as we know, we've, the, the town has done its part to see that we can notify people and encourage them to be courteous to their neighbors. But we're in a pickle on this thing, because we just, we have to follow the state law as it's written, and it's pretty nebulous with a fuzzy Supreme Court decision, but it is what it, what it is. But you're right, there were other, there were other avenues, there were other outlets all over the state, seven of them, to be exact, that were selling fireworks.
And you can get them on the internet, and you can go outside the state of Vermont and get them. So how do you, how do you control it? It's very hard. So I don't know if, you know, it's, it's a national thing. I don't know if we've gotten to that point yet, but, uh, let's work on Vermont, uh, you know, one town at a time.
I, I think we've solved the, uh, the current problem here, but we really haven't solved the problem, because as you said, people can buy fireworks.
Oh, yeah, it's still gonna happen.
Anywhere.
So.
If they don't use them responsibly, and they're going off in the city, or in Pittsburgh, or anywhere, I don't think it's appropriate for any community, no matter who they are, to blame another community because they're, because somebody's selling fireworks there.
Exactly.
If they want to do that, go up and blame Pittsburgh, or go up and blame Barry, or.
There's a lot of other, as you said, as I brought that up, there's a lot of other resources for people to get their fireworks. It's not just this one business, so.
At this point, they won't be blaming Rutland Town anymore.
So, the second, item two is I am requesting that the Select Board entertain the, um, adopting zoning in the town. I don't know if you've had a conversation with anybody, if anybody's come forward with this, or.
I think we have some Planning Commission members here tonight who may be talking about that.
Oh, good.
Okay, I will, yeah, why don't you stick around and hear what they have to say?
I surely will.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right.
Mary, Mary, I just have two comments, and then I think I will check out. Um, one is that on the fireworks issue, if people were to abide by the get a display permit, as Teresa said she did, then the problem would not be what it is. Last night, I got a text from my daughter, and she said, somebody in the neighborhood is shooting off fireworks, and the dog's hiding under the bed. This is what the problem is. It's the irresponsible people that are doing it. And the way to do this would have been for people like CNC to require a permit for the sale of fireworks. It ends at, at least, there's a paper trail, and you know who's going. And they found that hard to do. In every place in the state of Vermont that sells those, should be required to have, not to be allowed to sell fireworks unless people have that display permit. We have copies of it, and I don't know why Teresa couldn't get one, because that's been available for quite some time, but that may be another issue. And then on the second note, if the town were to adopt zoning, it would be in that zoning document where the town of Rutland could prohibit, uh, um, shooting off of fireworks in residential neighborhoods. So zoning has its positive and negative things. Just be careful of what you wish for. And I'm going to wish you all a good night, and thanks for my time here.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
All right.
Okay. So, Mr. Satchdev, would you like to talk to us? Thank you very much for coming in. This is Anil Satchdev, who is here on behalf of the Holiday Inn. And I'm, it's very nice to see you in person.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Satchdev has been staying in very close communication with us about, um, housing the homeless at the Holiday Inn, and perhaps you have an update for us?
Yes, I do have some. This time, you know, we are, uh, we are housing about thirty-eight, uh, families, you know, and, or singles, you know, at the hotel, which has come down from, uh, one time from ninety. And most of the vouchers, you know, are going to expire by first week of August. And, uh, after that, you know, we are no more taking any more vouchers.
Thank you, Mary.
So we are going down the road to, uh, finish the voucher program at the hotel. And most probably, I think it will be done by tenth of August.
Okay.
So from there onward, we're going to move back to Holiday Inn and, uh, do all the improvements, you know? At this time, the little improvement to put it on, and then do the major, major improvement later on.
So, August 10th is your target date?
August 10th is the target.
Okay.
We might, uh, you know, be left out with one or two, you know, who are not able to find some houses, housing, you know? But we spoke to, uh, State today, and we let them know about the plan, you know, that this is what our plans are.
Okay, good. And then some renovations, and then opening back up, and then even larger renovations to come in the future.
To come later in the, uh, after the fall.
Okay, good. When's your restaurant gonna open up?
Uh, we going to, you know, once they leave, you know, we're going to apply for the liquor license and everything, and then we'll open back again.
Okay, well, we'll look forward.
I think the board is okay with that, applying the liquor license back again.
I think you, you can certainly apply, yes. We'll see where you are in the process at the time. Okay, so any questions from Mr. Satchdev?
I have one without any names. You had an issue with one of your rooms there, with my father, I was.
Uh, 161.
Have you been able to take care of that, or no?
We are looking for your help at the time, you know. We are trying our best.
Gotten in touch with you, because I had a meeting here about that situation last Friday.
Yes, we spoke with the State. Uh, they were going to send somebody, but nobody came.
Nobody's came yet? The State Police, or the?
State Police.
And then, oh, the State of Vermont, talked to, uh, the DCF, uh, not Commissioner, but Assistant Commissioner.
Yes. They called us, you know, they called us, uh, last Friday, and they were supposed to do something on Monday. And they didn't call back on Monday. The lady is staying in the room. We don't have any voucher for her. We canceled the voucher.
Did I call the State back? Not the State Police, but the State of Vermont?
State of Vermont.
Where are you gonna get your money from, and see what they can do to help you?
Yes, they're saying to get help from the State Police.
So.
We are in, you know, limbo, you know, between, you know, uh.
I'm having a hard time following what's going on here.
Okay, we're gonna, a little bit of this is for later, okay? But just keeping it very general, um, the Sheriff's Department?
I think you should probably, uh, check with the Sheriff's Department. Maybe they're gonna charge you, because that's what they do. If I would be, other interests we have, or all the things that have happened, we're not able to move forward with that, for that to assist you.
Okay, we will, we will do that, so.
Okay.
Other questions from the Select Board, from Mr. Satchdev?
I have a comment.
Yes.
And you are?
Hi, hi, good evening. My name is Kareem Chapman. Um, uh, I am the Executive Director for Vermont Psychiatric Survivors in Rutland, and, uh, Board President for Life Division Team, which is working with, uh, the individuals, um, that have been placed at the hotel. I just want to speak on behalf, um, of the team that the owners, the management team, has been really helpful with us, uh, during the transition. Um, I'm on daily, weekly meetings with, uh, the Police Department and other representatives, um, for businesses in the area. And I just wanted to, I, I wanted to show up there to say that they've been really, really supportive and helpful, um, in the transition. Um, and I know they've tried really hard. And, um, also, lastly, I would just say that, you know, they came in and helped the State, or, or really Rutland, um, at a time when it was really needed. Um, and I think that, that should stand for something, and, um, and we're here to support them um, as they go to, go through the transition, and support them any way we can. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, thank you very much. I've heard of your organization, and I know you've done some good work, so, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Satchdev.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone else that you know of?
Um, Michael Sternberg, who is the property manager, is on, but Joe Anthony not, as of yet.
Okay, so the, and are we expecting him still?
We were. I don't know if Michael can fill us in, but Joe, Joe had accepted the invite. I don't know if he was still planning on coming or not, but.
Um.
Yeah, let me touch, let me touch base with him, uh, right now, and, um, and get his.
This is Mr. Stern from the Diamond Run Mall. It's New Business Item Number C.
I think he said he's gonna call Joe right now and see if he can.
Oh, okay, all right, so we'll hold on, on that. And do we have anyone else here who is not otherwise on the agenda? Okay. Moving along, uh, Carrie Clark. And Joe, if you could let us know when Mr. Anthony's ready. Okay, uh, Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer. Is she here? There you are, okay.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, Carrie.
Hello. Um, I, tonight I was prepared to talk about the tax rate for the next year. Um, we were able to calculate some, um, percentages and, and, um, what we believe would be the tax rate for the next year. Um, I gave you a, a little packet before, um, the meeting started, but I'm not sure if tonight is the night that you want to discuss that, or if you would like to look this over, and we can schedule a special time to dive right into it.
In the past, we have had a special meeting, and it doesn't last very long, but it's just for this purpose. So, um, gives us a chance to digest it, but what's your pleasure, folks?
Like, we should continue that.
Continue and have a special meeting just to go over it? What's our deadline for setting the tax rate, so we can get the tax bills out?
Thank you for asking. Um, we typically like to get the tax bills out to our residents thirty days before the first installment due date. Um, the first installment, uh, will be September 10th, hasn't changed. Um, so we would preferably like to get them out by August 10th. Having said that, um, we, each, um, town receives help from the program that helps us print them properly for our town residents. And he has, uh, scheduled a tentative date with me to do so on August 8th. So we have some wiggle room to work here. Um, I was thinking that next week would be a perfect time to schedule something and look over this, um, more carefully.
And sometimes we use our off days, um, off Tuesdays to schedule it. What's, um, what's your pleasure on this? Are you available next week, Tuesday?
We're doing a building committee, aren't we, for the Fire Department?
That sounds very familiar. Okay.
It's in two weeks.
Uh, if we're not sure, and we've got a few days, we could.
Talking next Tuesday or?
That was the question.
Fine with me.
That would be Tuesday, the sixth. Can we do it at six o'clock?
Point seven.
Oh, sorry, I just skipped a whole week. Clever of me to do.
Twenty-seventh.
What, what time?
How long do we, how long do we need, do you think, Carrie?
Last year, it went very quickly.
It's about half an hour.
I would say about a half an hour. If you have all of this in front of you, you're welcome to, um, post questions to me before that, and we can talk about it together.
Six o'clock.
Do it earlier.
We could do it earlier if you folks are available.
I'm, do it at five and get it over with.
JP, five?
That's fine.
Sharon, five? Okay. Five o'clock, Tuesday, uh, the twenty-seventh of July, we're gonna set the tax rate.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I also wanted to put it out there that, um, when we had the tax bills printed, the template, um, I did ask if we could do a slight change on our hours for Tuesdays, um, for the office being open. Um, I'd like to just keep it all week long, Monday through Thursday till four-thirty, rather than till six. So we reflected that in the, um, in the tax bill. Um, we made sure that the office is open forty hours a week, and we're well over forty hours currently, so.
Still Fridays at two?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So, um, that will be reflected in, in the tax bill, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to put that out there for public knowledge.
Okay. All right. Um, anything else for our town clerk and treasurer? I will say that I checked on the VLCT website, and we are certified now to, that we've done everything, thank you, that we need to do to get our ARPA funds coming in. Have you seen any deposit yet?
Um, haven't seen the deposit. Just received an email before this meeting, um, updating different areas from VLCT. And one of them, um, said that they are still in the process of letting us know the next steps, and we'll be, sending out emails for the, for the next steps. They were congratulating the towns that were, that applied for them. So there was like two hundred and fifty-six towns, us being one of them, so.
Good.
We're just waiting for next steps.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else for our town clerk and treasurer? Um, it sort of ties in, so I will mention it. Um, each campaign, there's always discussion about signs at the polling place for political candidates. Um, you weren't here last week, but two weeks ago.
My name was taken in vain.
No, we volunteered you for the committee, even better, Don. Um, so the, the city or the, not the city, the, um, school board asked if we would have a couple of representatives meet with them, so they could come up with signs, a, a sign policy that was uniform, both here in, on the town property and up at the school property. So, um, Jeff Colom is spearheading that. Sharon has agreed to serve. We volunteered you, but I'm hoping you'll agree that that's okay, and we'll put you on the committee.
That's fine, I.
Okay. Very good. So I will let the school board know and make.
Carrie on that as well?
No, but I was mentioning, are you?
I think I volunteered, but.
Okay, so yes, it would make sense because you get the complaints about the signs. So we'll, we'll put you on as well, and, um, we'll officially notify the school board that these are our three reps, if you will, please, Bill. Thank you very much. Okay, well, congratulations on your new appointment. Anything else? Okay, thanks, Carrie. Um, Barbara Noise Pulling, how are we doing on, um?
Uh, Michael said that Joe is not available tonight, but I asked if he could give up. He hasn't answered me yet, so.
Okay, well, still, stand by.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Barbara Noise Pulling, Town Planning Commission Chair.
And I'm gonna bring up, uh, Mary Beth Pullley.
Hi, Mary Beth. Good.
She's on the Planning Commission as well.
Actually, we were hearing from Dana Peterson earlier. He was called in on the ARPA.
A lot of showing tonight, yeah.
Mary Beth, it's nice to meet you in person.
You too.
So the, the, the Town Planning Commission has taken the initiative on a couple of things recently. Um, so we'll start with the Conservation Commission idea that came up. Actually, Mary Beth, uh, posed it the first time, um, to us. And so we brought that to you a few meetings back. You asked for a one-pager with information about what are conservation commissions, what can they do and all of that. Uh, we provided that, and then you wanted to get an idea of what, um, other towns were doing with conservation commissions. So Mary Beth is going to report on that, what she found, uh, doing some research.
This is, and was in the on-your-desk packet, so you should have, it's actually a half-pager. I'm impressed, instead of a one-pager, so very good.
Yeah. That's, we'll get to that in just a second, and, um, Bill, are you gonna pull up Mary Beth?
So Barbara and I reached out to several towns in Rutland County and a few across the state to see what other conservation commissions are doing. Um, so in Rutland County, we reached out to Shrewsbury, Tinnes, Middletown Springs, Mount Holly and Wallingford. They all have conservation commissions. Um, and then outside of Rutland County, we talked to people in Bradford, Middlebury and Heinsburg. And so most of the people we talked to are current members, and some were also founding, um, conservation commission members, and some have been around for twenty years or so, and some are more recent. Um, so we found some similarities between many of them. Uh, there's a big focus on parks and trails, and that's kind of how we got interested in the idea, um, and writing grants to improve them. Um, sometimes used Vermont Youth Conservation Corps, um, groups, uh, or also trail building companies, or several different companies in the state, um, that have helped towns with that. Um, educational efforts, another big part of conservation commissions, that range from resident-led, uh, members of the commission to bringing in expert guest speakers on different environmental topics. Um, conservation commissions also assist with town planning and led natural and cultural resource inventories. Um, a consensus from the people we talked to, uh, was that benefits to their towns of having these, um, include receiving more grant money to improve town land and getting more residents and tourists to visit their parks. Um, most towns work with recreation directors or recreation committees, um, on the park improvements and maintenance. Um, usually the rec committees will focus on ball fields, on more, um, intense infrastructure, and then the conservation commission will focus more on the trails, natural areas, canoe put-ins. Um, conservation commissions are involved in existing townwide events like Greenup Day and have other events with schools and, um, and residents. And all throughout Vermont, including all of these towns, any activities that the conservation commission proposes need, uh, select board approval. So they can't make any decisions on their own. It's, they bring an idea to the select board that gets approved.
Oh, questions?
Why isn't this something the Planning Commission can do?
So right now, we, we are. So as you know, we're involved with, um, the Pocket Park, trying to get that planned and going, but as you know, we have many other responsibilities, you know, subdivisions, boundary line adjustments, um, the Stormwater Commission, um, so this would be a group that's more focused on parks and trails and natural resources.
So it's been kind of a challenge for us to find people to serve on a lot of the boards in town now. This is just gonna be another board that we're gonna be asking for service on. When we've been handling trails and parks and recreations, just finding the town.
Right, our recreation is, I mean, Mike does a super job.
I agree, yeah. You can see the pictures up there. That was just this past weekend, uh, with kids and friends at Northwood Park. Um, we love using Rutland towns parks and, um, but I think there's a lot more potential. And in talking with, um, other town residents, you know, parents of kids at the school, um, there are some people that would be interested in serving on that group, but might not be interested in, um, boundary line adjustments and.
Yeah, another way of looking at that is that this might be more enjoyable, might, you know, might appeal to more people to get involved with, with, with town-related activities and.
You find municipal service enjoyable, do you?
Just say yes.
Hey.
Other questions?
The goals are admirable, but, you know, for, I just, I'm speaking from, oh, I don't know. I hate to, I hate to put a number of years on it, Mary. Thirty, thirty, forty years of experience with recreation and, and starting a recreation commission, and now we have a recreation director. And, uh, with all due respect to your goals, I really think we have in place right now uh, the number of people and the quality of people and the desire of people, the motivation of people. Uh, all you have to do is look at what has been done up at Northwood Park with the trail system to know that you got a lot of really dedicated volunteers and, and dedicated staff that are, uh, committed to that. And I would encourage more participation by the PTO, for instance, at the school with those parents to cooperate with the recreation commission, which they, which I think they do on a kind of an informal basis, for sure, but that, that could be on a more formal basis to do exactly what you're saying should be done. And I, and I agree that it should be done, and I think it is being done. But I have a hesitancy to create any more bureaucracy. And, uh, you know, we, well, we had a recreation commission, and we came to the point where we felt that we didn't need a recreation commission. What we needed was a really, really strong recreation director. And so we, we moved to that, and we have that system now, and I think it's working fine, so.
When was that done?
Pardon me?
When was that transition made?
Oh, my God. Well, tell me, Mike, how long you been in the job?
Oh.
Thirteen, yeah, so, uh, twen- almost ten years, twenty-one, eight years.
And you know, to be very honest, because I've been involved in recreation for many, many years. Um, and I've served on the recreation committee, commission. Um, you get too many hands on the fire, and the director can't get their jobs done, because too many people seem to think that they're going to, you know, um, and we're very lucky that we have a good recreation director. And I figure, I for one figures, if it ain't broke, don't try to fix it.
Well, let me, let me, um, speak to a different point, and then we'll go to the audience, okay? And this is, I'm in favor of, uh, of this. Uh, I think a conservation commission would do a number of things. It would bring in some fresh ideas. Um, we can't find all of the grants that might be out there. We can't think of all of the ideas. We occasionally, and this is no slight to Mike, who's done an excellent job, or to the rec, the select board's recreation committee. But we could always use more help. And I think this is the sort of service that may very well appeal to some of the newer members in town and some of the younger members with families in town. And I'm one for, you know, spreading out a little bit, not only the, the responsibility of helping run our town government, but also the, you know, the, the future of it. This could be our farm team that, uh, you know, provides people to serve on the Planning Commission at a later time or serve on the select board at a later time, or maybe serve on the volunteer fire department. I think we need to start opening up with opportunities like this to encourage people to participate in town government. These folks are gonna report to the, report to the select board, so I don't think they're gonna go off on a tangent. If they are, we're gonna hear about it, and we will take actions. But I've known of other people on rec commissions in other towns, and this is a very valuable resource for them, and they are able to do things that frankly, this, you know, part-time volunteer board and, and yours, um, just, we can't get to, we'd like to do, but we can't. So I think this is a great idea. Teresa?
I, I agree with you there. I think it's a way of bringing in some maybe fresh ideas and fresh involvement because, you know, I've been around for a long time in Rutland Town and done, done different things. Um, we're talking about the recreation committee. I think it was, um, now, correct me if I'm wrong, was there because there was lack of interest when we had a recreation committee, and that's the reason why you decided to go with a recreation director?
No.
No.
Sharon would know.
That was not the case.
Um, we decided we had a recreation director, um, who handled the job quite well, and you had too many people, um, making plans from the committee that was an interruption to that. And that's why I say what I say about getting too many hands. I have to disagree with you.
I understand. I al- I, I don't want to put Mike on the spot.
Put me on the spot.
But how, how would you feel about this type of, uh, coming in?
Well, it's funny that you mentioned that, because I, I'm in favor of new and fresh ideas. And just to, as a side note, we're meeting tomorrow as a rec committee. I'm in the process, the state of Vermont has five million dollars. There's no matching grant that I can apply for. And the minimum amount is fifty thousand dollars for your project. And Mary Beth and I have already started the process of getting our initial letter for improvements to Northwood Park. Stuff that I had, and then all of a sudden this grant came up and found information. And so I'm looking to advance what we already have at the park to make it more attractive, to bring families in.
There you go.
To keep it going. Now, having another group is, for me, if they're, watch, I mean, it's, what harm is it if they're gonna try to find and allocate more funds or grants to help our town? So we, I mean, I, if they want to take on that initiative, I think that's wonderful, you know? If they're gonna help bring stuff to the town as far as recreation. And our town, because we're not central, because we're the donor, we need to provide those kind of services to draw people in. When they look, you all know this, when they look to move to Rutland Town, what are the things they look at? They look at school, they look at housing, they look at recreation. Okay, so what are the possibilities that people have? What do they want when they move? And they're moving in like in droves, as we know. So we want to try to offer the best opportunities for families, for all age levels at our park. And we have a wonderful park with tons of opportunity to, and still keep the mystique of the park intact. But it's okay to have other people meet, to have other people say, hey, can we do this? Because that's how stuff kind of gets done. Someone will come and say, hey, did you ever think about this? Nope, great idea. Let's work it out.
Many hands make light work.
Yeah, exactly. And there have been tons of volunteers that have helped me over the years to get things done. So I, I couldn't have done it without them. Many of the people I'm staring at right now have volunteered their time, and who are also my bosses have spent countless hours at that park helping it become what it's become.
He always calls his bosses.
He don't mean it.
Yeah, no, no.
So anyway, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I didn't mean, uh, Mike, what I was saying, and I agree with you. It's nice to be able to have somebody to make suggestions. But when we had a committee before, it was everybody had their set idea, and they expected you to follow that, whether you were the recreation, head of recreation, or it was Pete Wallet or who it was. So we ran into some problems with that. Am I correct, Del?
Right.
Thank you. Del was on the commission with me.
Well, again, this isn't a recommend. This isn't a recommend commission. They're proposing a conservation commission.
Well, I'd let me, let me be very specific, you know? Uh, I, I, I said what I said before, uh, about us having the people in place to be able to do this. And I don't disagree with asking more people to get involved, but you can do that in a lot of ways. Wha- what, what I see happening though is that this idea and this conservation commission. Project is not something that, is not, is not something that came from the bottom up. This is something that came from Montpelier down. This is an idea of the state and, and, and it's expanding bureaucracy of whatever type, you know? I don't necessarily think that that's a good idea.
Well, there's nothing compulsory about it, and there are a hundred of these around the state.
Out of two hundred and fifty-six.
Yeah, that seemed to be working, working pretty well. And it's flexible enough that you can create the structure you want. I mean, there is some statutory requirements, you know, the reporting to the select board. And that there'd be minimal compensation and the size of the group, three to nine people. Um, but other than that, it's wide open. Um, what you can do with this and who is in charge, you can put Mike in charge of this group. Or the select board recreation committee. Um, it just has a lot of flexibility. And the mission statement we put out and we, we presented to you and the goals. We're just another way for the, the planning commission to wrap its head around what might work, what might work in Rutland Town. Um, and, and that's open to change, definitely as well.
And we did, at the last planning commission meeting, present similar information to the planning commission. And it was voted, um, in favor of moving forward with the idea and.
Was it, was it unanimous?
Um, we had some, we had an alternate vote. Um, even after one of the regular members came in late, so there was some confusion there. So the alternate, um, one of the alternates voted against it, thinking that it was adding too much. Uh, or could grow, uh, too much as, as its purpose, um, and submission and all that. Thought, um, it would just be like a mushroom sprouting out and, um, there would be little control. But that was the only opposition to it.
So what was the vote?
Well, it really was, um, six, it was seven to nothing, to be accurate.
Okay, and then the alternate was?
Yeah, it was, we thought it was six to one, but it was, okay, seven.
Okay. Any other questions from the select board?
What's the status of this, Mary? I mean, do we?
We haven't created one, Don.
Okay.
Yeah, the only, the only, um, thing that would be semi-lumineous is that it would need, since we're not a charter municipality, it would need to go to a vote. The select board would put it on the ballot. It could get petitioned on the ballot. Um, but it does need to be voted by, in a townwide.
Okay, so the next scheduled one that we know of is March town meeting. Okay, all right.
So the, the next decision for us would be whether we would wish to put it on the ballot to be voted on by the citizens.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Well, um, we are missing a select board member tonight, um, so we'll take this under advisement, I guess, and see where we go. Thank you very much for your work on this and we appreciate, you know, I've got to say, we have dumped a lot of stuff on the planning commission. And they have responded admirably from the pocket park to our, um, protective stream side for, um, impaired waterways, um, the whole scheme of permitting there. Um, you folks have done a wonderful job, so thank you very much. We appreciate your hard work. Okay. Okay.
Oh, got a few more things.
Okay, that's all right.
So the other thing that the planning commission took some initiative on, um, was a discussion about zoning. And a vote, um, last Thursday night to come to the board and ask if, uh, it could be reviewed again. And this stems from, you know, reading the stories out of Polit about the, the firearms training facility, which is really, um, probably a paramilitary training facility. Um, and the zoning issues there and the safety issues. And also some concerns about commercial activity in town, uh, in residential areas. So, uh, the, the commission voted to ask you, um, if you'd like to review the draft zoning bylaws that we think, um, were compiled in twenty-ten or twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve. Um, offer an updated version and submit it for your consideration. Uh, we also discussed that perhaps new ordinances might alleviate some of these issues. If, if it was deemed that they were real issues in the town. Um, we talked about whether the town is too built out right now for zoning, to even have much an effect. Um, but the, uh, the townwide survey back then, the twenty-ten, um, I guess it was overwhelming support for zoning, like seventy-seven percent of the townspeople. So that kept coming up. And, and, um, and one of the things, uh, the commission would like to look at is what were the questions in that, um, survey? And use that as part of the research. Um, and, you know, you could, I think the earlier version of the zoning was like a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty pages. You know, you could take a digit off that almost. Um, you can do a thirty or forty page zoning document.
That doesn't do away with the necessity to have an infrastructure to administer. And as you already pointed out, Rutland Town is probably ninety, ninety-five percent built out. All right, and if you look at the cost for zoning for other towns, if you want to start paying city tax rates. You can implement zoning in this town and you'll get your city tax rate because it adds an unbelievable layer of expense. Both legal challenges, administration, giving permits, challenging permits. It's a mess. If Rutland Town were twenty-five percent developed and we could have a positive influence with zoning. I don't know, even then, it's very expensive to administer. And, uh, we're here to keep our tax rate down for our people and give them the best service we can while doing that. And I, I was in favor of zoning until I looked at the cost of di- that it, the different municipalities incurred and the trouble. And I came to the conclusion that because we are so built out, and I came to this conclusion several years ago, that it would be an unnecessary expense for our taxpayers to bear.
Yeah, there, there was also some discussion about the town could raise, could impose some fees, like impact fees on development. To perhaps alleviate some of these added expenses. But you're right, there's a structure that would be needed. Uh, you would need a administrative, uh, a, uh, like a zoning administrator. Um, zoning, uh, administrative officer. And then you either need a zoning board of adjustment, um, that works with the planning commission. They share roles, or the other option is a development review board that does all of that. Does all the permitting, does all of the review and all the appeals and all of that.
You got another board, more employees. It just, for a night, for a town, it's ninety-five percent built out. It's not much of a return there. That, that's just my view of it. And I go back to your original proposal and my comments about that. And they apply to this as well. It's more bureaucracy, it's more micromanagement. Um, and as you mentioned, Barbara, one of the reasons that the town rejected the zoning in the past was when they looked at a hundred and forty pages of micromanagement of every single aspect of your life. And said, this is Rutland Town of forty-two hundred people. Do, do we need this? This is big city stuff. And then, of course, as, as JP just mentioned, with big city stuff comes big city taxes. And, uh, I think your, your second alternative probably makes a lot more sense. Uh, which is to identify critical problems that you see as a planning commission. And see if we can address those with ordinance solutions, uh, on an individual basis. Rather than imposing some massive structure and bureaucracy and cost to the town and administration.
Yeah, I mean, you could do nuisance ordinances or, um, noise ordinances. Um, I think there's.
We actually have a lot of those, and a lot of them have fallen out of date because we don't have any one person administering them. So I've asked some of the select board committees to take a look at the, the, all of the ordinances we have out there. And that's why you're, you're reviewing them. I was a zoning administrator. I mean, so I don't have this great fear that some of, some of you do. I've also worked as an attorney for towns on zoning issues and Act Two-Fifty and land use planning issues. A big thing you might want to keep in mind, um, is if we, we have a subdivision ordinance. If we adopt a zoning ordinance of really any size, if we adopt a zoning ordinance, Act Two-Fifty backs away and lets us run our town, except for very large projects over ten acres. So if we really believe in local control, we may want to put zoning in effect. So we take control over smaller developments and back Act Two-Fifty away from town. Yes.
A little lesson in history, Mary.
Yes.
When it was first proposed to the town, that very subject came up because there were Two-Fifty battles going on all over this place. And there were some really sensible heads in this room that said, okay, let's do a five-page zoning document and get it over with. No, we couldn't have any of that. And, and that's where it died. And we, uh, we probably should have done that and just done a reasonable five-page document that covered A, B, C, D, and E, and could have been administered by our previous, uh, administrator here. But that never happened.
Well, I will say, as an attorney for some towns that have had minimal zoning or been involved in projects, that if you don't have enough information in your zoning document, you're going to be in court interpreting. What did they mean? Because they left out this part. So, you know, there's, there's the, the split on the thing. Um, it's, you know, the town did say something about it many years ago. They were in favor of it. And we, you know, constantly come up with problems that if we had some kind of zoning in place, we might be able to solve.
Maybe if we asked the question, now, this came up, just, uh, when you said, well, we should, we should resurvey the people or we should find out what the people think. You, you wondered what those survey questions were?
Oh, sorry.
Um, possibly the way to, to go about this with our citizens is if they have, if they want zoning. Is to ask them, not ask them, do you want to adopt zoning? Uh, that's, that's, that, that's a cheap way out because it's easy, oh yeah, we want zoning. Ask them, ask the citizens specifically what areas they feel need to be addressed that are not being addressed in this town. That they feel zoning might address. And when we get those answers, like I said, possibly we can, uh, we can solve those through ordinance. You got to find out what it is the people want. I know they don't want somebody coming around and checking if they got clotheslines in their backyard or, you know, this, other.
If they're in a planned development, there are often restrictions like that anyway.
That's correct. That's right. They don't need anymore. Voluntarily assumed.
Well, they're assumed when you buy into the.
They're, well, they're buying a piece of properties of voluntary act.
Yes, it is. Yeah, because you have to say free act indeed when you, when you sign.
Anyways, that's it.
I don't know if Andy.
Andy? Yeah, Andy McLean, member of the town planning commission. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, I would. I, I'd just like to say the, the argument here should really not be about zoning. But just whether you'll let us try to put together a document that everybody would like. And that's what we would really try and do. A minimal document, not to micromanage zoning, as, as Don put it. But just to have a simple one so that we have the protection, uh, for the town from Act Two-Fifty. And also bring forth a number of things from ordinances, um, some simple ordinances that, that, um, that I feel uh, the town lacks right now as far as protection for individual citizens. Uh, one specific one is the amount of fill that can be brought into an adjacent property. Um, right now, we have no restriction on that. Um, I myself have seen, uh, one piece of property being built up by, uh, fifteen and twenty feet to a property line. And, uh, JP, I think you can back me up on that. Uh, you saw it also. And so that's, that's some of the things I think we should look at. And what we would like to do is just have your permission to, um, put together a document and then re-submit it to you. And then let the debate begin.
What's your pleasure, folks? Well, there's one other comment from the, the floor.
Don, Don wanted to know what the, I'm junk, I'm Jane Q Public here. You want to know what the public feels? I, I, I feel that we would have protection right now. It's like a free-for-all. It's anybody can do anything what they want. Some people like that, other people don't. It just depends on what side of the coin you're on. So for us, we feel like I would feel more secure knowing that there is something. There are parameters that my neighbors and any other, because Rutland Town now is mostly residential neighborhoods. It is no longer farming communities like it was years ago. So it has evolved, so I think we need to evolve with it and protect the integrity of, and protect our citizens in these residential neighborhoods. And it's, it, you know, it can pit neighbor against neighbor. And we're experiencing that, and I don't want that to happen in any other neighborhood. I've seen, seen this business grow from a little lawn mowing business to now a big, bigger, bigger excavation, um, landscaping business. And we have, we can't do anything about it.
Any other comments or guidance for the planning commission? They're asking if they can work on putting together a proposal for us. What's your pleasure?
I don't have any objection to them working on it if they wish to do that. I mean, we can, uh, ultimately it'll be our decision in, in any case. I just don't want them spinning their wheels on, like, uh, like Barbara said, uh, on a hundred and forty-page doc. I think you.
Don't worry about that.
Think your time would be better spent doing the conservation work. That would be, I didn't want to say that, John Paul, but you did, so.
Can I ask, what's, what, what do you, so I know, John Paul, you, you don't like the idea of the price tag of.
I don't think it's worth the cost, Teresa. I don't.
I know, I realize that, but you're, you gotta, you gotta think of your citizens too. You gotta keep your citizens happy. And if they're not happy and they're grumbling about something that's going on, and I know I speak from experience and I know not all neighborhoods have the same problems that are, that, that we are experiencing. But there probably is something out there. I'm not, you know, I'm sure you guys hear about it. You're the public health officer. You know what's going on.
What we hear about, if you want some kindling wood for neighbor disputes, give some of your neighbors the power to complain about your dog, the, the length of the leash or the clothesline. The, oh, the clothes being dried and the clothesline in the backyard. A zoning document is going to generate a lot more skirmishes and it's going to settle because as again, we're ninety-five percent built out.
I don't think you have to get to the point of micromanaging. I don't think, you know, with clotheslines and stuff like that, I don't, you know. It, I, I think you should just focus on the real nuisance.
Right, so you need to, uh, what, in terms of what I said, be specific. When you say, well, there are, there are things that are bothering you, what are those things? Are, are, are you specifically talking about, um, over-commercialization in a residential neighborhood?
That.
That can be dealt with, with an ordinance. That can be dealt with and with our, with our town plan because we have designated residential areas. And residential means a certain thing. Residential does not mean a whole mess of construction equipment on your lot.
So why doesn't the town plan work, Barbara?
Well, it, it, it doesn't have the, the regulatory teeth, um, to enforce anything in it. Um, another, another thing to bring up here is, um, whatever is happening out in the town, in the town right now is grandfathered in. I mean, even if we came up with zoning tonight, um, those things, that, those operations would still be able to do what they're doing. those things that those operations would still be able to do what they're doing. It would only apply, you know, going forward.
Could you limit the size of what they could grow to limit them, cut them, you know?
Most ordinances have
Most often not. If the use is already established pre-zoning, there's nothing zoning can do.
We will not quite.
The size of equipment or or if they bring in bigger equipment.
Not if they pre not if they were using it before zoning, no.
But if they were to purchase bigger.
Oh, I don't know the answer to
If they were to add on to, if they were to add on to a building above, say, ten or fifteen percent or whatever limit, then that would trigger zoning because they've gone beyond their initial use. That's just from, but we're getting into the nitty gritty.
Yeah.
Planning Commission wants to know if they should proceed with at least working up something that they feel might be useful for the town. I think you should.
Got a willing group.
Yes, you do. And pretty talented group, too. JP, Sharon, what guidance do we give our planning commission?
I'm not interested.
Sharon? So we've you're saying no now?
No, I changed my mind.
Okay.
I just
So I was gonna say we could wait and see what Joey says, but as long as it's three to one right now. Thank you for your willingness. I appreciate it.
I think we got, we've got a whole mess of things on our plate anyway. I mean, we've got. I mean, it it may seem like a it may not seem like an onerous task to spend four hundred and thirty four thousand dollars that just came in on a Christmas tree, but that's that's a lot of responsibility. We got that on our plate. I just don't think we need to deal with this at this point. I really don't.
What if we put zoning aside and just looked at possible ordinances?
I don't have a problem with that.
I would support that.
I would support that.
Okay, starting with the ones we already have, because we have quite and and I will say the problem with so many little different ordinances that any developer coming in can't find them all in one place. So they have to know whether they're in an impaired waterway and on that. They have to know whether Act two fifty applies how big they are, and Act two fifty will apply to more and so on. So. You know, no problem with an ordinance review, and that might help out the select board committees that are working on some. Not sure how we're going to get them to take over the water sewer ordinances, but that's another whole story. But I have no problem with you doing that, so. And actually telling us what we have and what we need to work on and update would be great.
Flood regulations.
Flood, yeah, yes, yeah.
Okay, okay, just a couple more small things. I promise. Speaking of ordinances, we finally have, we wanted to go with this, the new ordinance, a map that would go online, that people could go up and go to the map and either, you know, type in their address. Or, you know, just take the cursor and to the parcel that they they're interested in and find out which part of the ordinance applies to them. So this, we think this will be a great help to all those people in the eastern part of town and southeastern will actually goes over across Route seven, I think, the watershed to the south. So there's a lot of people. And I don't think we have it up on the website yet, but it is done. It is working, and we think it's pretty nifty.
Okay, thank you.
And one more thing from the Regional Planning Commission. There was some money given to regional planning commissions from the legislature this past session to hire energy planners. So it looks like here in Rutland will have will hire a part time person who can work with towns, especially those with energy plans and hence energy plans already in place to help them implement them, help them organize events and update them, whatever else is is needed along those lines. So stay tuned.
Okay, thank you. One thing you remind me, and it was an announcement I was going to make, I think the select board is all aware of it, and you are too, Barbara, but the John Flatley Company, which was proposing a two hundred and sixty unit housing project at the south end of town is not pursuing that. We did receive word about that. It was last week or the week before. So we know housing is needed in the area, but that project is not going forward. We were told there were too many wetlands on the property they were looking at, so they pulled out. So and I know you folks were, you know, taking a look at it and getting prepared to help us out, so I appreciate that.
It's gonna be a big project for the
Very big project, yes. Not anymore. Okay, anything else for the Planning Commission?
Probably want to get rid of us at this point.
Well, thank you very much for coming and for your work.
Barbara, what you do.
Thanks. Okay.
Michael said Joe is not able to join, but he is ready and willing to provide an update.
Okay, so let's turn away from our very patient department heads. Sorry about that. And we'll hear from Michael?
Sure, yes. My name is Michael Sternberg. Yes, hi, everybody. First and foremost, Bill, thank you for coordinating this, and it's been an enthralling conversation. I've certainly enjoyed listening and you know, I'd like to certainly provide a very brief update. Joe Anthony, our CEO, unfortunately was unable to make it this evening, but we will coordinate with Bill to get on to answer some questions on a upcoming meeting. So Bill will discuss that, put that together for one of the upcoming meetings, but happy to provide the group with a very brief kind of update on where we are and kind of the different uses that we're talking to right now. To kind of piggyback on that last mention, you know, we still feel that a strong housing and hospitality component to this project is something that really could drive this. So we're working with reaching out to local, regional, national home builders, workforce housing builders and different kind of housing groups to assess the level of interest, and that's certainly been a a a big focus of our group, you know, up to this point. So housing hospitality is certainly a a big piece of it. We also feel that one other area to explore is potential entertainment uses. Entertainment uses in kind of the mall retail world right now are are shifting, you know, based on what's popular, based on kind of what people need, what people are getting excited about. And also what type of uses have kind of run their course. So we're really keeping our ear to the street on kind of new, exciting entertainment uses that can be really family friendly, year round uses that can either use the existing space or, you know, build new, whatever it is. So we're really working strongly on that. And then, you know, we feel certainly as a third component, very strong need for really great local and regional restaurants to complement some retail, you know, local, regional, national retail that we think, you know, can be very successful here. So those are kind of the three areas that I'm staying focused on in terms of leasing and development. You know, certainly when we have specific names, when we get further along on some of these, the level of interest or on these deals, you know, we're happy to kind of come for you and say, here's a name. I I'm looking forward to that when when that opportunity is available. So those are kind of the three areas that we're staying focused on. You know, and one other thing that I want to discuss is, you know, we've kind of opened the project up to any needs that the state or the community has. So we've worked closely with Veggie Van Gogh and a few of the other groups handing out prepared foods and and, you know, food to the community. And and that's been going great. We've been doing that since the spring of last year, and and it's going to continue through the fall and and whatever needs anybody has locally, regionally, at a state level, in terms of getting food to people in an easy way. We're open to that. We've said yes to everything. We want to do it. We have the site to do it. We have the ease and we've drawn the maps to make it very easy for people to come in and out. So that that's something that, you know, we we definitely made a focus on is, you know, whatever the community needs, state needs in terms of getting food out to people, you know, our answer is always yes. So, you know, with that, I just wanted to kind of give that brief update and certainly on an upcoming call when Joe is available, we can dive down to more specifics or any questions that you may have for him at that point. But I really appreciate the time, and we'll certainly coordinate with Bill and be in contact again very soon.
Well, let me ask you one thing that's of concern to us, and that is security at the empty mall. We have had reports of break ins of people if not living in there, certainly using it for temporary housing. We've had, I think we've had police calls up there. We've had, have we had fire calls? No? Okay, but we've had police calls up there. And various times when you have reported in, actually, it's kind of sounding like what you've said the past two or three years. But you've talked about partial demolition. You've you've talked about that. So what are you thinking now? And what are, most importantly, what are you doing about security up there? Because that is a problem.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm looking at it in two ways, you know, certainly being reactionary to something, you know, Bill and I stay very close. If there's anything that, you know, comes to his attention or he sees or hears, lets us know, and it's something that we handle right away. And then on a you know, kind of a preventative nature, you know, just making sure that everything is sealed. You know, if there's anything that we see, you know, if there's a door that appears to be loose or anything that gets broken, fixing it right away. So certainly, you know, being reactionary when something is brought to our attention, but also taking preventative measures as well. So in staying closely, staying in close contact with the sheriff. You know, we we certainly are able and dependent from the state police, you know, we're able to text. And if there's anything that is of concern, you know, I think that we handle it, you know, in a timely manner. If it isn't, you know, within minutes, it's hours or certainly that day. So we're we're keeping a a close eye on making sure that everything remains sealed up. You know, keeping vermin people, keeping people out, keeping the grass cut and and giving the appearance that, you know, certainly this is a a site for you know, future development, not so far in the future, but certainly something that you know, with the interest and with the uses, that hopefully will be ready to go, you know, fairly soon.
Can you take care of the back garage door that keep breaking in and going in, tearing the place up?
That was our chief of police asking that question.
Yeah, so that the back door you're talking about is on the Sears side on that back door?
It's a garage door in the back.
Yeah, the garage door in the back. Yeah, so that's something that, you know, did notice that from the from the outside, able to pull it up. We put chains, we put locks on the inside, and that's sealed up. All I checked all three doors. Everything is sealed. No entry is able to get in from the outside. Check the chains and the locks and everything like that that's keeping those doors out. I assume it's the same thing that that Sears did. So went through and did a another evaluation of that to make sure that that's all locked.
Okay. To follow up, maybe a little a little more strongly in terms of this security issue, Michael. The you need to, seriously, you need to address full time security for that property. And and the reason is very simple, that we we have a limited police force. And and we have residential neighborhoods all over our town
Sure.
that are begging us for more visibility of the police. And every single time they have to go up to a call, which is frequently to your to your establishment and others, you're not the only one. That detracts from our overall community policing. And I really think you have a responsibility to provide more security up there than you are and not rely on our police force to handle these nuisance complaints. And as you're, as you proceed with your with your planning and your project, which I admire, but I'd like I'd like you also to tell us what what you're what you envision as the timeline for this, because everything is always coming. It's coming. We're doing this. We're doing that. What's the timeline? Do you expect to have this project completed within a year, within two years? What can we expect? But I'm saying this board, this board definitely, I believe, is going to expect you to 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 agree to full time security at that property before we proceed any further. We had it, we had it at the beginning, and it worked well. And to be honest, we we tried to be responsive to, you know, the needs of property owners when the, you know, when they're losing businesses and and they have costs and they're trying to cut costs. So I guess you came and cried to the board and the board relinquished and and removed that security provision from the contract. I personally think it was a mistake, but whatever, that's in the past. But that security has to be added to your property. And I don't mean just you got a camera and then you call the sheriff or you call this. I mean, you provide the security. That's got to be part of your business cost. I wish you would relay that relay that to to Mr. Anthony, anyway.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll relay that and discuss it. Sure.
What what about that timeline decision? Do you do you have any timelines?
I I can't speak to a timeline. You know, maybe this is something that we can, you know, continue to update, you know, as we go through in different meetings, but it it's tough to provide a timeline knowing that it's really use based at this point. So it's tough to it's tough to label a timeline on something like this. I I could tell you that, you know, the interest level is there. We're working with a lot of different groups and a lot of different areas. So we we hope to have something concrete, one thing to kind of concrete we can kind of lease and build around. And then hopefully that we can, you know, start it off with with one announcement and then be able to kind of lease and market off of that. But it would be difficult, and I think you're responsible, me, to provide a a specific timeline. But again, something that I'll speak with Joe about and see if we can kind of put something out there, you know, in the next, you know, couple of months for for the group.
Thank you, Michael.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
So a question I have, I think a year or so ago, or maybe two years, when you visited with us, you said you were on site most days a week. What's your presence on site like these days?
Yeah, so nothing has changed in that capacity. You know, certainly if if there is you know, a need in something that we see, we're certainly able to handle it. If there's something that Bill sees, you know, I'm able to kind of be there. I'm I'm close by. If I don't happen to be on site, you know, that specific day. Or, you know, business takes me elsewhere, but certainly I'm there. You know, the the better part of a couple of days a week, so able to kind of check the doors, make sure that everything is you know, secure in any way, and then certainly following up on anything that that Bill finds that that we need to address right away.
So you're kind of referring, you're referring to Bill's suite here in our office?
Yes, correct. If there's, you know, again, like I said, we're we're handling things that, you know, reactionary, if Bill is able to say, hey, you know, here's two or three things, can you look at it and address it and write on it and we communicate? So so that's, you know, keeping the lines of communication open are are very important, certainly doing that.
So you're you're leaving the burden to policing the place kind of to the town, and then you will respond, right?
Well, that's that's one thing that we do is certainly, you know, take into account whatever reaction that we get. I mean, if if Bill says do that, this is in addition to us taking preventative measures when we when we see something that needs to be done. So, no, I I think it's it's I don't want to classify it as just relying on that, you know, certainly above and beyond what we do is is listening to whatever we need to do, whether it's kind of we had issue with homeless, getting involved with, you know, clearing out. If there's a need to kind of provide and and make it more secure in that way, shape or form. So certainly taking our preventative measures, but also kind of listening and reacting to things that Bill might bring bring to us.
Other select board members have any questions or comments?
You know, we seem to get the same answers all the time, so.
All right.
I feel like it's a broken record.
All right. If there's nothing else, thank you for your time, and we look forward to Mr. Anthony calling us.
Absolutely. We appreciate it again. Thank you so much. Absolutely. We appreciate it again. Thank you so much.
Okay, where were we? Byron. Town Road Commissioner Byron Hathaway.
Nothing too major for you this evening. I left a compliance form on your desk, Mary. The other day, I think you should have it there. It's an annual certification that we have to send into V-Trans. Typically it's done in the springtime, but apparently it got missed or it got.
Okay.
Relayed or something, I don't know. Anyways, I guess there's a whole bunch of us towns that missed out on it or something in there. V-Trans is after us to get that certification into there.
All right. This is a certificate of compliance for town road and bridge standards. And network inventory, it's very brief. We, the legislative body of the municipality of the town of Rutland certify that we have reviewed, understand and comply with the town road and bridge standards, public works specifications and standards passed and adopted by the Select Board City Council, well, on the Select Board on December 3rd, 2013. So we adopted these back then.
That's, that's the latest, the 2013 version is the latest version of codes and standards.
Okay, and we certified that our adopted standards do meet or exceed the minimum requirements included in the June 5, 2019 state-approved template. Are they all up to date? Okay. And, and the other one is just if we, oh, wait a minute, we do or do not have an up-to-date highway network inventory, do we? Which includes locations, size, deficiencies, conditions of roads, bridges, culverts, causeways and highway-related retaining walls on class one, two and three highways and estimated cost of repair.
Updated, it will be updated again. It has to be updated every three years. This is October, it'll be updated again.
So I should check the box? We do.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that is, and so you're telling us that this is all up to date and okay. Okay, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the certification of compliance for the town roads and bridges. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed? Okay, this one we all signed, so I'm gonna pass it around. Okay, one down.
And the other thing I have, uh, is, um, GMP would like to place a new pole on Blueberry Lane. Intersection of the towns right of way with my own property. So normally I just sign off on things like that, but property involved, I thought the, the select board would like, would write that letter to GMP, giving you permission to put that pole on the outside edge of the towns right of way.
Towns right of way. Okay, done this is yours. So are you folks willing to, um, have the Select Board issuer letter, giving GMP permission for the Blueberry Lane pole?
Yep. So move.
Motion's made?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 So you'll have Bill generate that letter?
We'll have Bill drafted, please. Thank you.
Wants to be addressed to Susan. Susan Eckard.
Is there somebody behind me?
No, I'm looking at you. A little girl, she lives down on the Mandalay. I don't know where she lives. She drives by the house all the time. Eckard?
Okay.
To record, yeah.
All right.
Must be addressed to her.
Okay, and you'll provide Bill with that information? All righty, thank you.
And then the other issue is, uh, and I, you want to discuss that in the executive session?
Yes, we need to have an executive session with you, please.
Back to work or not.
Okay. Also, digging in the road right of way, were you gonna issue a reminder to folks about that? What they need if they wish to dig in the towns right of way? No? Yes, we had this conversation because I found the little white flags down on Creek Road.
I haven't received anything from Minard.
Okay.
I did meet with yesterday, yesterday with Consolidated and their contractor. They're gonna be doing some underground installation of a two-inch conduit in the, uh, Grover Drive, short section in Grover Drive, 90 feet, I think, in Grover Drive, and then quite a bit up in the Colonial Drive. So we're all set with those guys. They're gonna issue us a $5,000, uh, bond for one year. Turn damages or anything that takes place.
My ones, uh, when is the second call, finish call scheduled or what's this?
We're all done.
What's this?
Uh, the paving's all done.
Really?
Grove Street's done, McKinley Avenue's done.
When, did it, didn't it happen today, did it?
Probably you were out, I don't know.
Oh, you mean those, those markers are just gonna stay on the road?
Until the state comes in and paints.
So that is the finish coat?
Yeah.
Cause it doesn't seem to match up between Grove Street and, 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 uh, McKinley. It's, there's, there's variations there where that transition is, I thought.
At what point? Right at the?
Right there at the end.
Think so? I'll check it out again tomorrow.
Well, right at the end of McKinley, well, the end of the paved portion of McKinley, where it meets Grove Street, it was kind of screwy in there.
I'll look at that again. I, I thought it had come out all right, but no, the floor is all done. Uh, he hasn't sent a, uh, an invoice or anything yet, but, uh,
Now, the, the shoulder work, is that part of the contract?
No, that's, uh, that's on.
That's on you?
I picked up the shoulder machine the other day from Clarendon.
I saw you working down there.
As soon as we get help enough rounded up here, we've got a little more hand paving left to do at Andy's Garage. That will take care of all the paving, hand paving, apron work on McKinley Avenue. Um, and then there's a few driveways on Prior Drive that need to have slight berms and a couple of aprons. And we'll have that done next week. And then we'll start on shoulder work. Any minute time, we're gonna get the school driveway cleaned up, topsoiled, that sort of thing. Sidewalks done down to school.
When I met with the school board, they were very appreciative and very excited about the whole paving project there, so thank you for that.
Be better when I get it topsoiled and cleared. Crash growing again.
Okay. Any other Select Board questions for our Town Road Commissioner? Okay, if not, thank you Byron, you'll be here for the executive session. Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief. Good evening.
Good evening. I have really nothing to report. Our new trucks coming along, should be here December still, that's the hopefully delivery date. Pictures are online, uh, I think Billy puts them online, so.
We had a meeting of the, combined to the, uh, committee of the whole of the Select Board with the Fire Chief and Assistant Chiefs and the Police Chief and Deputy Chief concerning what to do about McKinley Station, so. You, uh, we sorted out, I mean, you can report on that if you want, we sorted out things that we needed. We do have a survey, we're gonna take a look at the survey. We've asked the department heads to work up, um, their specs, at least their square footage that they believe that they will need, um, for replacement in the, in the case of the Fire Department and the new, potential new facility for the Police Department. And we will have a meeting in a couple of weeks, I believe, so there's progress on that front, so thank you. Oh, and we need creative solutions for the water situation there. So I think that was the other thing on our agenda. Okay, any questions of the Fire Chief from any Select Board member? Have things been quiet?
They have been.
Okay, I do want to mention, we have received from the Town of Killington, uh, the Town Manager, the Select Board Chair, the Police Chief and the Fire Chief. The Town of Killington would like to extend its gratitude for the assistance of your town's first responders provided with the recent forest fire. While we understand participation and mutual aid obligates the town to respond to events when requested, your town's firefighters went above and beyond for the multi-day event. The town would like to emphasize its commitment to assisting in whatever capacity we can, such as with equipment and/or personnel. Thank you again. So, thank you Chief, um, and this is from these folks.
And relay that thank you to your members, please.
Please. Maybe Bill could make a copy and pass it on? Thank you very much. Cause I understand you're somehow connected with the Fire Department. Yeah, yeah, okay. Anything else for the Fire Chief? Yeah, I'm sorry, you can turn it back on whenever, it's just when we were on the screen.
Nice report, Chief.
See, that's the power position right there because you control the clicker for the air conditioner. Yeah. Okay, Town Police Chief Ed Dumas. Good evening, Chief.
Yes. Good evening.
Make sure you speak up there, Eddie.
I know, I've been, I've been told that I mumble sometimes.
Yeah, you do.
I apologize for that. I'll try to speak up tonight.
At least some of us will tell you the truth.
Yes, it's true.
And the rest will just.
Some more than others.
Dick Tracy used to have a sidekick named Mumble.
Yes, I do. I've been told that. So we had, uh, we had 49 complaints for, or calls for service in the town last two week period. The usual stuff. We did have a meeting last Friday with, uh, Project Vision, the state and, uh, myself. The group is getting smaller. As far as Hanaford's concerned, it looks like they have just the, the regular shoplifters, not quite the the volume that we had, uh, in, um, March and April. So things are starting to die down, which is a good thing. There is one issue with, uh, with a person easily, but we're not gonna, we'll talk about that later. And other than that, we also got a, Ted got the, uh, Deputy Chief Washburn got a email today saying that the, uh, cruiser was, was in, he saw it down there, we filled out the paperwork, get his email, excuse me. Next day a letter, or a, a letter with a check in it to the company, so we should have, be able to pick the cruise up very soon. Then we should, also the title issue, we have the other cruiser, we've, we've got pretty much everything we need on that and we sent that to the state of Vermont and they're gonna help us hopefully get that taken care of. Then we'll know how to do it with the other three cars we are, two cars we have, or three, so.
No, that, that new vehicles, that's the one with the rocket launcher, right?
Yes, yes.
Good.
And a helicopter on top too. That's all I have at this point.
Okay, so police cruiser in a few weeks?
I suspect as soon as we get it, we'll have it, uh, probably start out.
Fire truck in December. Where's our town truck?
We have a build date and event number for August 16th.
Okay.
Bodybuilder is ready for it at the end of September.
Okay, so when do we actually get it?
When it gets to.
Yeah, okay. So we tried. Any questions of Chief? We do have, um, an executive session on a police matter, um, later on, so.
I'll stick around.
Okay. Anything? Okay, thank you Chief. Oh, um, JP, we had a, you reminded me that we need a motion to authorize this Select Board to be the Civil Review Board for the Police Department.
Correct.
Over that, could you explain that and maybe make the motion?
So under the new, um, statutes passed by the Vermont Legislature, our Police Department needs a civilian oversight and the legislature has designated the Select Board, uh, as that civilian oversight board. So I'd make a motion that we accept or designate ourselves as the civilian review board for police, for the Police Department.
Excellent.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. None opposed. Okay, thank you JP. All right, Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Evening all, how are you?
Good evening.
Mike, I have, uh, just nothing really, other than, um, next Tuesday is the senior luncheon. Uh, we have discussed, we were discussing patty sizes for burgers, uh, today, so please, uh, if you want to come down at 11, you qualify.
I don't qualify.
Come on down and, uh, and, uh, the guards have gotten their charge, so they're in the process of coming up with their sides, so that anytime after 11 next Tuesday, right at the pool, rain or shine, um, happy to see you there. We do have a rec committee meeting tomorrow morning at nine, we'll see this, but if, and if you'd like to come to attend and part of that conversation is around expanding the park and grants that are now available that have, um, zero match. And so we are with Mary Beth, who's been helping me craft, uh, get ready to craft the letter, because it's a steep, you know, jump-through-hoop process. And, uh, hopefully we can qualify and we're up to about $90,000 internally as to what we're going for. The minimum is 50. So we will have that discussion tomorrow, just to let you know that that is moving forward and advancing what is happening in our park.
Is there any maximum?
No, there's no cap. So, but they're only giving 25, they have like $5 million. And they're, they're doing, they're only giving 25, and I was on the Zoom meeting yesterday and there were 90 people there, so I'm, I'm assuming, I'm hoping that we can be part of that. So that's just going forward and that will be a conversation at our committee meeting tomorrow.
Okay, and then the, the committee will tell the board what the projects might be, or?
Yeah, I, I don't want to put the cart before the horse. I mean, there's, there's nothing other than your approval of the projects, obviously, which we will bring
Okay.
to you. Yes, without a doubt, I will give you a full, what our plan is.
Okay.
Um, and if you have any suggestions.
You don't mind if we, you don't mind if we attend individually or tomorrow?
Come in and give me your input.
No, I just.
I'm trying to spend the state's money. If I can get it.
Can we, like, replace our pool, for example?
You know, that's, I was reading it.
Okay.
We what?
Replace the pool, we need to.
I was gonna say, could we enclose the pool, but I know the answer to that question.
That's a lot of money, which I don't think you really
Yeah.
realize how expensive that proposition is.
Oh, I do, I do, I got prices on it.
Yeah, it's expensive. It's more than this town needs to repair. Other than that, things are going well. Uh, obviously the weather is, if it's good, the pool's good, if not, it's not. That's just the way that it rolls. People are very happy to be out there. Like I said, everything's ongoing at the park as far as trying to improve and maintain and keep everything going as we go. So soon before you know it, it'll be fall, signups, which is happening soon, I didn't say it, but that will be happening and the information I believe is on our website. I think there's some dates there.
Signups for?
Signups for fall soccer and flag football.
Okay.
Those would be our signups for the fall. So people can do that now, they are on the website, so they can sign up anytime they want. They can drop them off at the pool or drop them into town hall. So feel free to start signing up for our fall activities.
Great.
That's all I have unless anybody has anything for me.
Questions for our Recreation Commissioner? Thank you very much. All right, Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant.
Evening.
Hi.
Uh, all right, so, uh, the only thing left in the packet is the meeting schedule and the sewer allocation requests, which was new business A. Uh, so move to approve the sewer allocation request.
Okay. Yeah, who's it for?
It's pretty straightforward. Uh, James Levens on McKinley Avenue.
Okay, motion's made.
Excellent.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? For 45 gallons per day.
Yeah.
No discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I think you need to sign, no, just a, just a formality.
All righty.
Uh, all right, uh, we got, uh, our safety grant application was approved, uh, for everything except for the ID printer, which we knew was kind of a long shot, so I was gonna talk to technol, we were gonna talk to the building slash technology committee, we could talk about maybe purchasing it anyway, but uh, some of the department heads have said they contribute if we wanted to do it anyway, so we'll, uh, we'll see. Um, so, uh, the grant was awarded. Potentially, yes.
Okay.
Uh, so the grant was awarded. We've, we've already ordered or already have underway all of the things on the list, so we're, we're already making, making way on that. Uh, the new furniture for the hallway, uh, in the office is done. They're just waiting to figure out when they can get it here to us.
Okay.
So that should be out there soon.
Are we getting it Scotch guarded or safety coated? So?
They, they don't, they don't offer that. So it's, it's a fabric, but they don't offer the, I asked them about that. They said they didn't really do anything. They had vinyl, but wasn't really, yeah.
Okay, so we'll do something when we get it here.
Yeah.
Please, building committee, please.
Joe, I was gonna fuck with Joe, but he had meant, we were talking about before the, this, uh, the speed limit ordinance, like bus speed limits in town on Ranbury Road was not one of the ones on the list that we talked about.
Okay.
It was not included in the meeting. It was not included in the list we warned, so.
So the speed limit remains at thirty-five on Ranbury?
Is whatever it was. We did not change it to twenty-five officially.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion.
Well, it has to go through, that's a ordinance, so we have to, we, we can't, we have to. Yeah, it's a whole, it's a whole thing.
So could we start the process?
So that was, we were gonna bring that to the, at the committees and talk about reviewing them and that was one of the ones too, because we were talking about looking at all of them and, and if we're gonna do it, do it at once and.
Okay, so this is highway or police committee for this one?
Yeah. I mean, I guess it's highway. I mean, it's a vehicle, it's the vehicle and traffic ordinance, so it probably should be the police, but.
Okay.
How much overlap is there, Joe and Sharon? Well, it's Sharon's on both, so.
Okay.
You got it.
So we should set up a police committee meeting and
Yeah.
put this on the agenda. Okay, thank you.
That's fine. Uh, we talked about the permits for, uh, excavation right of way. We have the other permits. Uh, we have vendor peddler permits, so people that have, especially food trucks, uh, are required to have those. And, uh, as I drive around, I do notice some new trucks. I said, and I've reached out to them and they've all gotten their permits as they needed to, so we've got several. Uh, so as part of that, they are required to display their permit in their window where they're operating. So uh, if we don't see it, then they need to have one. Um, we also have like the building permits and all other things. So the, um, informational building permit. So we've been pretty good about, uh, keeping up with those. Uh, we have, um, couple things, uh, things around the office, which, uh, we are going to have five metal filing cabinets, uh, that are going to become available in the next couple of weeks. Um, so if anybody needs one, uh, or five, we have, we will have them. Uh, there's also a large table downstairs, which we're not, we didn't really know the, what the actual intended purpose of it was, but there's a big blue table.
Is that the wooden one?
Yes.
Heavy.
It is a little heavy, yeah. Uh, so it's available for anybody that would like it, but we don't, we don't need it. And I guess this original intention was to be a picnic table outside, but that's kind of a tall picnic table, so. Um, so it's there. I was gonna, if there wasn't the interest around it, I was going to post them online and see what we could do for them to.
Department heads, anybody need a table? It's real sturdy. Something about recreation.
He declined. Yes, I've, I've already asked him. Uh, and we also have that, we still have that window downstairs from the remodel.
I told you what I'd give you for that thing.
It's not up to me, like.
Well.
It's, uh.
Maybe if you just came and handed the check to the board, they'd just take it.
Um, so it was the one that was ordered that we weren't allowed to return, but was not what we asked for, so we own it. So it's just sitting down there and it's a big three-bay window with two crankout panels and.
Where did we order it for?
The, Ben, the contractor ordered it for the office remodel evidently at our request. And it was a special order window for where it was supposed to go and it was not what it was supposed to, it was never what it was supposed to be. Yep, so we own it. Cause he charged us for it and we, we paid for it. So, uh, it's, it's been down there since the remodel.
Yeah.
Cause he said he couldn't return it. And so we, we have, we have it downstairs and it's just been hanging out. We've been moving around and around and around.
Money for that.
We, we.
A hundred bucks.
We should see if we can get some real money.
I think, I think we paid about nine hundred. So, I don't know what we're, what we want to do with it, but it's there.
Okay.
Uh, tomorrow morning, uh, at ten thirty here, we're meeting with the rep from the Dufrane Group for our kickoff meeting for your sidewalk scoping study. If you'd like to participate, it'll be here tomorrow morning at ten thirty. They're, she wants to meet here, yeah. Well, we were going to, but there's not really like a good place to stop and talk. So she said, she said here. I'm like, fine, so.
This JP's sidewalk?
This is JP's sidewalk, yes.
You gotta be there, right JP?
So this is, this is, this is the official kickoff meeting for the scoping study.
Going to be like embedded in stone now?
Well, I, I mean, we may be able to.
Somebody's gonna go carve it in, like you do on sidewalk, you know, remember when you were a kid?
Maybe like the Hollywood.
I'll meet you down there.
I'm not gonna tell you who, but somebody will put it in.
Like the Hollywood Walk of Fame will put his, will put his handprints in it.
Yeah.
Like the Hollywood Walk, we'll put your handprints in the sidewalk for them. Um, so that's tomorrow morning, ten thirty, if anybody wants to be here to, to, to talk about that. Uh, and lastly, uh, Robert Clark, uh, reached out to me. We, he sent me the files that we've gotten scanned. Uh, and he said, our project for Post Road, the water line sounds great, and he wants to come and talk to our water sewer committee meeting. So I've asked him for some dates he's available. Um, and so then I can put, I'll put another committee meeting together and we can get him in here to talk about that, so.
Nice.
Great.
Yes. Uh, yeah.
Do you have that other competitive bid or whatever on those purifiers so that we can put this thing to rest?
Well, we, well, we gotta, we gotta probably go to, we gotta go to the building committee with it. Now that we have a couple of them, we gotta discuss it and review it and, yeah, but yes, I do. Uh, so, so yeah, I need to get you, I was hoping Joe was gonna be here so I can get you guys to, to get you guys to a meeting. Uh, so we'll talk about that. Uh, the last thing, uh, on your desk was a request for a certificate of location approval. The Rosenberger property is gonna be either adding a usage or changing usage, uh, under a new, uh, company name. Uh, so they are asking for a new certificate of location approval.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion is made and seconded. This is for Copart.
Copart.
Uh, certificate of approval for location of salvage yard. That's their plan. Out here on Business Route Four. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? I vote in favor. And we all need to sign it. Okay.
Think there's anything else on the desk that we need to cover? I think that's.
Yeah, we had a couple of easy ones. Well, first of all, just for information, if people are um, techno geeks, there is here the application from Velco. Velco, um, to do their project up here at the corner of Post Road and Route Seven. And, um, it is the application for the Vermont Public Utility Commission. I think we were the only people who requested a paper copy, but it's here if anyone would like to.
We have two.
That was me, wasn't it?
That's okay.
Uh, um, we have a thank you note from the Vermont Council for Independent Living. And this is for funding that was one of the appropriations, five hundred and thirty-five dollars that our taxpayers approved at town meeting. We have a thank you note from Gianna Pizzetti, uh, thanking this, the, oh, this one was not to Bill.
Not to me.
It was to the scholarship committee. And I would like to thank your committee for selecting, selecting me to receive the Rutland Town Scholarship. I was truly honored and very appreciative. Um, and so on. So she's going to go to UVM and major in molecular genetics, minor in chemistry. Wow. Good, okay. Um, anything else from Bill or questions for Bill?
Nothing else from me. I think I'm all set.
Okay. Right, that goes in there. Um, uh, we're down to, I think that's it then for now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. JP Fagman, Town Health Officer.
Nothing, uh, active to report, but I'm sure people are aware that this Delta variant is creating headaches for the CDC. They're trying to decide. Um, there's been numerous reported cases of people with the, who have the taken the shot. Um, but they're still carriers, passive carriers, but they're still transmitting. So folks that have not had the vaccine are really at risk and almost ninety percent of the new cases, the new Delta cases are affecting people who do not have the vaccine. So as the town health officer, I would encourage anybody who has not yet received the vaccine to do so for both your own protection and those of your loved ones. That's all I have. Um, I did send a letter around to the board on another matter, uh, referencing Kevin, but that's something we could talk about later.
Um, so that, okay. I was actually adding that to my list. All right, committee meeting updates. And we just talked about scheduling a few of the, um, committee meetings. I did mention the uh, McKinley, yeah, the McKinley Avenue replacement for the fire, um, possible adding the police facility. We did meet, um, the water sewer committee met. We didn't have any action items for the board, but uh, we continue thanks to Bill to stay on top of sewer allocations and trying to come on top of that. Um, the project list, we've touched on a few things. Um, but it's getting kind of late, so I think we're gonna move along. We, uh, under new business, we have done the A, which is the water sewer or the discharge, sewer discharge allocation request. We've done B, CNC fireworks. We've done C. Um, Joe Anthony, um, actually it was Mike Sternberg calling in about the mall. We've done D, Anil Sachdev was here about the Holiday Inn. The tax rate will be set, we've got a fine, oh, we did. We set next Tuesday at five o'clock for the select board to meet and set the tax rate. Um, we talked about the, of John Flatley Company and not going forward with their housing project. Um, we do have a request to meet with Town Listor Howard Burgess and we'll do that in executive session. Um, the intermunicipal committee, you'll recall, the city invited us to send two representatives to join with their three representatives and discuss, um, the traffic and pedestrian safety issue on Route Seven. So we have tried three times and we're trying a fourth time to set a mutually agreeable committee date and we haven't hit it yet. So if, um, we'll, we'll get it done and we'll.
We're waiting for three responses.
Yes, we did a doodle poll, the last of them. We still need people to respond to the doodle poll. And any other new business to be brought before the select board? I do want to mention the very nice, um, make a wish that was granted for a youngster here in Rutland Town and I would congratulate Vic Shappi of VMS Construction, R.K. Miles and Dave Wock, who all teamed together to bring this youngster to the attention and build the deck for him and his family in Rutland Town. So nice bit of work, folks. Thank you. All right, um, so I will, I think I'm going through my list. I think I've got everything. Unless there's anything else, I'm gonna run off um, who we need the executive sessions for and in order.
Going to all business?
The sign policy, you're on the committee. Okay. Reclassification of Quarterline Road, um, near Boardman Hill. I think that's just, should we just take that off?
I'll get started in August with the paperwork and bring that into you. That's require the public hearing and a site visit.
Okay. Good. And any other old business?
Other.
Okay.
Number one, I would like to thank the board of selectmen, my comrades here, for your thoughtfulness. The fruit basket was delicious, but the sentiment was even more delicious. And it does help recovery to know that people care, that you're recuperating and not yourself, really. So thank you.
You're welcome, Don.
Um, and thank you. Thank you, Bill, because I know you got tasked to do this, so, you know, no problem. Nice job.
This is where I say it wasn't really a task.
No. No, it is. Not, not for this board. It never has been either. Um, and the second matter, uh, is I would like to put a second, I don't know, a, a, a third reminder in because there's some old business that went months ago when I requested that the library association provide, the Rutland Free Library provide us with a list of town residents, uh, and, uh, well, provide us the number of people in the town that were members and a list thereof. And that didn't happen, so I brought it up again. And I believe, Mary, you, you kind of assigned Bill to make sure that the, uh, board members were notified that we wanted this list and.
We got a email from Randall Smathers that I thought I had shared. It basically said they, I don't believe they keep track by town.
Well, they best do that because they can't make any statements as to how much money we should owe if they don't know how many residents we have. And I, I feel that information is vital and for them not to have it is derelict in their duty, really.
I think their explanation, which probably you won't agree with, is they keep track of people by zip code, which of course puts me in Clarendon and probably puts other people out in the city.
That's been an excuse. That's been an excuse for years and years and years. We've got fi- four different, is it four? Maybe it's five different zip codes in town.
I think it's five.
Well, that, that certainly doesn't relieve them of the responsibility of knowing how many people in Rutland Town are participants in their library. And I want to know that information before we go into the next election cycle. Uh, because I may very well proposing to the board that we put an item on the ballot, so. Uh, that's unacceptable. We want to know many Rutland Town residents are participating in the library. I don't think that's, I don't think that's an unreasonable question to ask when we're spending. You know, you know what the amount was. A lot of money. I mean, you know.
I do. My daughter does. That's two.
Well, you know, that's the start of a list, Mary, but.
I, I would hesitate to require a library because we don't of other users to name the people from our town who use their services. We have many, and it's a bad precedent in my opinion to start because we have many groups here at Rutland Mental Health, for example. We have, um, ARC, we have organizations, the Rutland Ambulance Service. Should we list everyone who uses the services? It's a violation of privacy. In many cases, it's against some laws in some cases. So I would hesitate to require an organization that has come before us and received, um, from the voters an appropriation to list all of the, the people in town who are users of that organization.
I think it's irresponsible to the townspeople to ask for that quantity of money without knowing how many people are availing themselves of the service because everyone has to pay. What if it's only fifteen people that are using the library and somebody would say, wow, we're, we're spending this kind of hundreds of thousands of dollars here for, for, for this? We're, you know, we're, we're into the hundred thousand dollar range. It's a lot of money. Uh, and quite frankly, we had this discussion before and it settled pretty well with our citizenry. But if they had a per person charge, then obviously they must have to know who the persons are if they're going to make the charge.
It's a per person, per towns person, the number of residents in the town.
No.
Not the users.
Somebody wants to use the library that's not a member town. They have a per person charge that somebody can go in and we'll charge you twenty-five.
Randall told you what that was. I forget what it was.
Well, yeah, they upped it from twenty-five to thirty-seven to make it jive with what their, what their, uh, their ask was.
Why would we need a name? Why couldn't we have a number? You have a hundred and six people in the town. That would tell us how many people. Am I correct? We don't have to know their name and I agree with Mary. That's a privacy issue.
Well, uh, you know, we.
But we can know the number. I mean.
I don't, but Sharon, I don't know how it's a privacy issue if they're taking public money.
Well, then we should say that to Rutland Mental Health. We should say that.
There's all different layers of privilege that apply and it does no good to pick an example at the way into the spectrum of what we're talking about. I, and I thought that they told on they were gonna give them that information.
They did.
They told me at the time that they would provide it. And, and the reason was very simple.
The names?
Yes, because the number and the names. Uh, I, the reason is very simple. Uh, the last time we had this discussion, way back when, uh, the obvious. the obvious subject came up of, well, if you got this much charge per person, we need to know how many people. Maybe we would be better off appropriating twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars into the town clerk's office, and anyone in the town that wants a library card, you come in, you, you come in, you show the library card, you'll get reimbursed at twenty-five dollars. That would automatically make it a public matter, because then their name is in there, they've come in and they've requested it voluntarily, they've gotten their money back, and the town has paid for them, and now that's a matter of public record.
That is incredibly intrusive, Don. Have targeted the library.
Yes, I have.
Whatever unknown reason.
I have targeted the library because they're, because the expenditures that they're making and the decisions that they're making, I don't believe are in the best interest of the, of the total citizenry of Rutland Town, and that's who I was elected to represent.
Board meeting? Have you ever gone to a library board meeting? Have you read their minutes? You're talking about the decisions they're making, so I'm wondering how much homework you have done.
I don't, I rely on a trusted media source who's sitting right here.
So the answer is no, you haven't been to any meetings to find out what their process is or what their decision making really is.
I know they've decided to abandon a building and, and go to another building. I, I, I know they haven't, they haven't asked the citizens of Rutland Town if that was appropriate to do that. Our, I know our board members haven't come into, haven't come to any one of our meetings to ask us, or.
Did you participate in the listening session? Because they had a couple, I did, I was on one of them for an hour and a half.
I didn't hear them ever ask if they thought Rutland Town would approve of them moving that library to a new location.
They asked quite a few people.
Well, I think the townspeople ought to vote on it for a hundred thousand dollars, but anyway.
Since that's moved.
The, the recurring question is, are we entitled to know how many citizens in Rutland Town are availing themselves at the Rutland Free Library? I think we are entitled to that information.
I would say, how many, we have four thousand?
Forty-two hundred and some odd people.
So we all benefit from the existence of the library in our community, whether we use it once a week, whether we use it every day, or whether we use it annually, or whether it is available there for our use.
Well, Mary, that's your opinion, I have my library right here, it's right here, get just about anything I can get there, right here.
Well, I still do the old fashioned way, and I'm glad it's there. Okay. Executive session, anything else, Don, for old business? Any other Select Board member for old business? Okay. So executive session on a police matter, on a highway matter, on a Lister matter, and on a town attorney matter, they're all personnel matters. Is that a hand raised, I see? I'm thinking no, but that's up to the board, I'm thinking no. You can always check the minutes if we come out, and, okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. For, for personnel issues? And we'll take a break right after. All in favor, say aye. Okay, five minute recess, then we'll come back into executive session.